Okay, your recording's on. So, Councillor Coker is listen only up at the hospital, the B hospital, the dead, so we are going. I'm she gave you two questions to ask in her stead.
Okay.
So I'll ask those for her and then she'll be able to hear your response. Is she dialing calling, you know?
Yeah, she can.
Okay, good.
Is she gonna be able to vote?
Um, she's thinking to be out of the, out of the appointed by them. Then she can. Yeah. All right, so with that, Brewer, welcome. Thank you for putting the application in.
Yes.
Very well, very much appreciated. What we do is just go around the room and start starting online first, I guess. Councillor DeJernison, uh, do you want to start with your questions for Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, hi Damian, thanks for applying. Would you just tell us how long you've been in Oak Ridge and what your interest is in the seat?
Well, I was born and raised here. I left Montana in ninety-eight and I came back thirteen years ago. Um, so I've been, I've been home for thirteen years and my interest in the seat is since I've been gone, I've noticed this town has changed dramatically towards and I'd like to be a part of trying to get some resolution to some of the problems that the community has brought to my attention in the past thirteen years.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
That's returning.
Uh, we're just around certain, okay. Damien, so me and Damien grew up together, so. What, what's your stance on, um, on the question of what the city requires to run versus what the people desire?
Um, I believe the city ultimately should, in my opinion, do what's best for the city and the citizens are usually that part of the city that we should come in. Like it shouldn't be a one of our personal agenda to go out and try and, you know, fix something that we think needs fixed personally. It should be a community oriented um, position, right? I think we should listen to the people of the city of Oak Ridge and follow suit with what they need done to make them feel safe and satisfied with the talent they did.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're just doing one.
Do one and there more, go around a second time. Okay, that work, okay. Well, I think it's asked in Councillor Coker's first question, the question is, what is your outlook for Oak Ridge? How do you see it?
Well, when I was growing up here, it was very community oriented. Everybody knew everybody. It was a little family town, you know, everybody went to the same churches and went out and breakfast on Sunday morning and everybody knew. It doesn't feel like it's like that anymore, you know, and I'd like to see the community come back together as a whole and they get at least some of that back. You know, that's, that's my ultimate goal is to bring more community oriented people into, into the community and get everybody on the same page. There's no reason for all of us to leave trying to get our own agendas done by ourselves without the help of the community.
Yeah. That's all.
Um, this kind of, um, from a question of what you've already talked about, but I, um, I want to know what is the biggest issue facing Oak Ridge that you would like to be a part of problem solving? Uh, maybe some examples. In the past, it was public safety, but it could be, um, you know, getting new housing and here economic development, um, trust with the citizens, anyone, what's the big area for you that you really just want to be a part of improving?
I think the biggest issue for me is the trust with the citizens. Like there's not, everybody that I talk to, and I talk to pretty much everybody in town. You know, I'm in the construction business, I pop to customers all day long every day and everybody has the same complaint. And it's all public safety. Our fire hydrants are missing, six out of ten fire hydrants around town have just stand pipes, they're not certified fire hydrants, our police department, when they call, nobody responds. You know, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have anywhere for kids to walk up and down the streets safely. You know, our streets are garbage. To say the least, they're unmaintainable, is what I've been told for twelve years. Our streets are unmaintained. That doesn't make any sense. But that's, it's public safety for sure.
Yeah.
That's okay.
And well, I think that she just took my question to you. Um, how about what's more important for Oak Ridge? Building new homes and business space, commerce, or rehabbing and better utilizing existing homes and business space?
I think rehab would help first. If it was up to me, I'd have fifty-eight vehicles in place. Because it looks like, when you pull into Oak Ridge, all you see is dilapidated old buildings all the way to town. And the people driving through town, they don't want to stop in a town like that. So if we could rehab, you know, the, both the dilapidated buildings and get rid of the burned out buildings that are still standing that have been there for ten, twelve, fifteen years. We don't have a very pretty town. If you ask any folks that drive up and down Highway fifty-eight, they love the mountains and the ranges around here, all the trails. But as far as the town goes, they don't want to spend any time here. I'm gonna start with fifty-eight. We'll do some rehab.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask my question. Um, you know, reading through your cover letter, you make some pretty serious allegations, specifically being forced to watch as seven employees and officials go unchecked and held unaccountable for their mismanagement has been beyond infuriating. This and so many other details, I'm going to believe this is what is left for our town and state exam. So I guess first, do you have any idea back that up? And two, if you joined this august council, what exactly would you do as an individual? If you've already told them they're unaccounted, so how would you work as a team?
And, and of course, without mentioning us, specific names of.
Well, yes, yes.
Well, I am a team player at heart. Um, everything I do is for the team. Um, and for the good of the community, you know, I'm not, I'm not one minded in any way, shape or form. I have great ears, I love to listen, and I love to watch people. That I can't, I can't make any changes without the help of the community. Right? There's just no one man in this town or a woman who's going to make any significant changes by themselves. So if I get the seat, I would absolutely be a team player. Um, there are some folks that I would like to see on um, because they don't do their job. But that's my personal opinion. I don't know what happens behind the scenes inside city government because I'm not here. But I would like to be here to see and that help change some things that I personally need to change.
But you suspect that some of these folks are unchecked and unaccounted?
A couple of them, yes. For sure.
Okay, um, second round, Councillor Johnson, do you have another question or are you done?
Yeah, I have another quick one. Uh, Damian, do you have any budgeting experience?
Um, I budgeted my business before I met Kelly for twenty-three years all by myself. No help, no, no pun intended, but Kelly is Kelly has been the savior of my business in the last seven years that we've been running here in Oak Ridge. Um, but prior to that, you know, I ran three five managers in Montana for almost twenty years all by myself, all the paperwork, um, all the billing, all the bidding of jobs, um, and my accounts were always in the house. So I have, I have quite extensive experience with, with payroll and expenses and all that good stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Um, uh, you brought up you're buying highway, this, me, that's also very important. So as we all know, ODOT's one of the biggest owners of property in Oak Ridge, I'm running through town. And in order to unify, it seems we would need to work with them. Do you have any, I mean, as far as like going back to the table with ODOT versus trying to convince private owners to fix up their places? Do you have preference one way or the other?
Well, and you can't unify a town by a time and date. Right? It just doesn't happen. You can plant all the trees and close down the lanes, put in bike lanes, all of that. All you are, it's not going to be out of town. You're still going to have dilapidated old crappy buildings sitting on the side of that highway. There's nothing else to look at. So in my opinion, I would start with the homeowners and the property owners. And get them to at least put a face bracelet on them. I mean, it might be slapping the same on pay per se, but if we can get that part done and make it look a little bit more presentable to the folks driving through Oak Ridge, then we can deal with the sidewalks down fifty-eight, that may be a lane closure, a bike lane. You know, we don't have anybody riding bikes up and down fifty-eight, except for the homeless. You do, but you're one of the very few people who are brave enough to drive, ride the bike up the highway. I don't let my boys ride that way. I don't even let a cross sign. People come racing through this town at fifty miles an hour, sixty miles an hour, when they first come into town, then they slow down to about forty, forty-five through the middle of the town. That's not the same type of.
Okay. Uh, Councillor Coker's second question was, um, given your outlook for Oak Ridge, what would you like to see changing? Obviously touched on some of that stuff already, but yeah, it is that.
You know, just more community oriented people, you know, if I can go out and be the voice of, uh, not say the whole city council, but you know, tell people that this is, you know, something that we're trying to do as, as a council. You know, and get their approval or their denial and hear from them. You know, I know you guys aren't just sitting back here all by yourself doing your thing. You're out talking to the community members, you're doing your, you're doing your part, but one more voice, I'm, 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 everybody here knows that when I have something to say, I say it. Uh, and that might be a downfall. But that's just how it is.
That's all? Any more?
Um, no, I think questions are good. I don't have anything to add.
That's okay.
I'll ask one more, um, Damian, if someone were to give you a million dollar grant to use for the city in any way you want it, what would you choose to use it on and why?
Million dollars.
To be used for the city.
Would have to think on that. I don't have any idea where I started. I bought a couple of the side streets through Oak Ridge, like I don't know how much does it cost a neighborhood?
Two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
How much?
Two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for caris fee.
Two nineteen.
For a speed one. With, with some more.
I was gonna say, I was just voted just to do an approach, uh, Westbury, it was seven thousand dollars just for the asphalt. And three thousand dollars for the coasters. But that's probably where I start is some of the side streets that are all dilapidated and poofed up and you know, we keep putting as, as the city of Oak Ridge, other works, they don't have any money, so they just put cold patch on it. And call it good. And the community doesn't like that. They're wearing tire on the trucks and the cars that drive up and down those roads every day. So we can start with the streets.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for applying. It's, uh, James, I guess.
Yeah, I'll get the next.
You're open to say.
Yeah, you've already done for the.
We got a letter.
Whether. I'm Brewer.
Like it anywhere?
Anywhere you want, wherever you're coming. If you want to be up there and, and people there. Anyway, thank you for your application. You're glad to get it. Um, what we're gonna do is just go around the horn and ask each ask a question and if there's any follow-ups, we'll do it after the first round. It's okay. Yeah, great. Councillor Ken, you want to start this one?
Sure. Hi Kelly, thank you for applying. Hey. Um, my first question for you is what do you believe is the role of the city council in our community?
I think the city council is the voice for the community. I think that, um, as a city council member, um, you have to put your feelings and opinions, your own feelings and opinions aside and listen to what the community wants and what the majority wants and what, um, you feel in your heart is best for the community that you live in. You have kind of a unique town in the way that things are structured and, um, with people being here and grandfathering things and the different levels of, um, income. So I think that part of the city council too is to be able to look at the whole picture and not just be, um, direct directing your feelings and opinions towards one class of people. It has to be for all of us, you know, in the entire. So I think the city council needs to be, um, flexible and be able to see the whole picture and look at it as their job to be the voice for everyone, not just certain people.
Thank you.
Uh, what is the biggest issue that you would like to improve in the city? That could be, I know there's a multitude of them, but, um, now some people kind of have a, an idea when they run. Mine happened to be, I really wanted to stabilize public safety. Sometimes it's economic development, um, trust within the city and the citizens. Those are just a couple ideas, but it could be not anything. Yeah. I think that, um, that last one is probably the most nearest and nearest is the, the trust in the community. Um, I lived in big cities, the San Francisco Bay, I lived in Las Vegas and coming here, I found this place to be, um, just charming and amazing. And, um, I think that over the years and the, the trials and tribulations of the city has seen over the last twenty years, um, that, uh, a lot of that trust has been lost. And so, um, being involved in the community like I am and, um, getting to know people, I feel like that is probably one of my biggest things is to, um, to help with trust and direction and following through with what we, um, what we, where we want to see our community go. Um, I think that trust has got to be the very first and foremost, and then probably, um, just having the job market here, helping families. I know there's a lot of housing issues, um, rentals are so scarce. Property values are, are out of control. People are having to pay a lot of money for housing. I would just like to see the community more inviting to, um, its members, not just the people visiting, because I know that that's where the income comes from, but the people that live here year round. I think they've lost a lot of trust in, um, the direction that the city wants Oak Ridge to go. Because a lot of us are just like, well, wait a minute, you know, I know we want to, I know we want to, um, be appealing to tourists, but they're only here for a few months out of the year. And so I know a lot of people that I've spoken to feel like the tourist attractions, um, first, and then the community number second. So trust in community, I think is one of the biggest things I'd like to work on.
So, uh, Councillor Coker is listen only at the hospital, so I'm gonna ask her a question that she gave to me for, for her. Uh, the first question is, what is your outlook for Oak Ridge?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll bridge. My outlook for Oak Ridge, as far as like where I'd like to see it go.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Um, I would like to see Oak Ridge, um, be a plethora of, um, jobs and community, um, togetherness, Y and CAs, um, more things for kids to do. Um, I think the, the drug problem that we're having here in our town, a lot of it has to do with boredom. I think if I was a teenager here, I would be bored to death. And I would probably seek entertainment in, in other ways, because that's just how teenagers think. They want to be entertained. And so I think that if we had more, um, things like Y and CAs, community, um, gatherings, I love all the community gatherings that you guys have hosted in the past. But, um, I would like to see, um, a more together community, holding government and, um, the people under, you know, the citizens of Oak Ridge. I would just like to see everyone come together and be on the same page as far as where we want to go for our future, the ten year, twenty year plan. I would just like to see that we'll be together.
Thank you. Councillor Trump.
Uh, hello.
Hi.
Uh, so what is your stance on what the city requires run versus what the people desire? And as far as trying to decide if it's majority, how do you go about deciding if that is the majority?
I, what you mean, I'm sorry, I missed the mother.
So, uh, what is your stance on what the city requires to run versus what the, uh, people may desire?
The city itself to like run, be managed as a city?
Yeah.
What the community members want?
Yes, they solve and be managed as a city.
Uh, that's a good question. Um, I think that the city needs to have more income. I think that, um, the city having more income through, um, you know, vendors coming through. I know that we have a lot of, um, community events come through that bring in income, but I know a lot of people around on that because the tourist attractions bring a lot of, um, some negative aspects as well. So I think that what the city needs to have is good direction and, um, transparency. And I think what the community wants, don't side to that. I think that, um, you know, having having the ability to, um, communicate with the community as a whole, I think will enable them to see what it takes to have a city run properly and smoothly. And, and then as long as it's something that isn't, um, aggressive. You know, there's been topics that have come up and I know a lot of people are against and then a lot of people are for. And it's, you know, the meat in the middle, there's got to be a meat in the middle. It just has to be. So I'm hoping that, you know, for the city to run properly and smoothly, it's willing to also listen to the community members and find it on the ground that works for everyone. I mean, we're only three thousand people, thirty-three hundred people, so it, you know, it's, the money part is hard, but I think that, you know, everybody coming together is not as hard as it, uh, is not maybe on topics, the things that we need to have the city run properly. I, I don't know if that answers your question.
Oh, uh, thanks. Um, Councillor Johnson, do you have a question for Mr. Brewer?
Yep. Hi Kelly.
Hi.
Thanks for running. Um, how long have you been in Oak Ridge and why are you interested in this seat?
I have been in Oak Ridge since two thousand and six, so about eighteen years. Um, I have batted around running for city council for years and years and years, but the idea of a four year seat was very intimidating to me. Um, I've got, you know, a almost six year old and a fourteen going on fifteen year old, so life's kind of hectic. But, um, when, uh, Councillor Hooker's position opened up, I found that, um, the, the seat distance, um, that we were going to go for was something that was not as intimidating, so it made me all more willing to, uh, to give a shot and run and see what happens and not be as intimidated by it. And hopefully, if I am elected, then it'll be something that I am looking forward to, you know, rerunning and going for the four year seat or the two year seat or however we work at election time, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, uh, I'll ask my question. You know, I read your cover letter very closely and, and there was a, a concern for me, it was the mayor, but there's some allegations in there. And so specifically it says here, I've, I've seen the mismanagement and the smoke and mirrors of the playground community for decades now and like to be part of that change. So first part of my question is, what evidence do you have of that? And second is, what are you going to do to change?
And of course, um, please don't mention any employees by name.
No, 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 I promise. Um, when I, when I refer to decades, I meant the last twenty years. I mean, I know that there's been a lot of issues with budgeting and, and rumors and and things that were that should have been more transparent with the community, things with specifically budgets and severance packages and, um, embezzlement allegations. And there's been a lot. So, and a lot of that, um, you know, has been the smoking mirrors, it's been the, the lack of communication with the city about what's going on. Because we found out as a city, we found out about it like years after it happened. When everyone started saying, what's wrong with the budget? Why are we broke? What's going on? So for me, it, for me, in my opinion, how I would change it is get rid of that, get rid of the, the, oh, you know, don't let anybody find out, this is all just something we're going to take care of in-house. I think that's how a lot of things ran before you, before any of us were, you know, in the city council. So with that said, I think a lot of that mistrust has been carried over. And there's been things about, um, councillors that have come up that, you know, have, had, that came up, um, right around election time. There's constantly things on Facebook, there's constantly people bringing up things about this person or that. So I think that, and, and all of our councillors, you guys all just, you maintain the professionalism needed and I think that's wonderful. Um, but I think that the, a lack of transparency in the past has caused a lot of ripples in the trust now. And so with me wanting to get rid of all that mistrust, that's where my change would come, would just be transparency and making sure the community knows what's going on in the city they live in.
Thanks for that answer. Um, we're on second time, please be cautious of timing, stay behind. So, uh, Councillor Ken, you can start with you.
Um, yes, please. I have one last question. What is your approach to handling a controversial and complicated issue?
Reading. Um, I think it would just be research, looking into it, trying to get all the facts, trying to keep, um, a neutral view until all facts were reached. When a small community like this, I know a lot of topics can hit close to home, unintended. Um, so I think a lot of people need to emotionally involved in the things that are happening around them and in the place they live, on their street, to their neighbor. And so I think that, um, a councillor being able to, um, detach from that and just be a councillor and not just, and not a neighbor and friend, but also a councillor first and foremost. Put their professionalism ahead of everything else to take care of the situation in a non-biased, neutral way. And that would probably be the way that I would handle any controversial issue is just trying to try to find the best, most, um, you know, middle ground way to, to get through it.
Thank you.
Awesome. You have a, uh, a, a wait since we're, okay. Councillor Johnson, do you have another question or are you all set?
Uh, just a quick one again. Uh, do you have any budgeting experience?
Um, I do budgeting for the business and the household. Um, I, I do profit and loss analysis. I do a lot of all that stuff with the business. Obviously not on the scale as big as the city. Um, but yes, I have accounting background. Um, you know, I use QuickBooks Online for all of our business, you know, I manage it, it's, it's pocket change according to this, you know, compared to the city budget, but, you know, we run a three hundred thousand dollar a year business and, you know, we, we manage the finances through me. So I try to, we're always on the budget, we're always on time and, and so we, we keep everything, you know, in the black and, and so yeah, I guess that would be my accounting. I guess that would be my accounting experience, you know, I did, um, before I was disabled. Um, I was a senior account manager for the second largest car dealership um in the U.S. when I lived in Las Vegas. But that was a really long time ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much for applying again and uh if you wanna go outside this. Okay, uh, just so that everyone knows, it's okay if we go over legal requirement. We can, in case you want. Well, Ms. Hammond, one, first, thank you so much for applying, it's great to have your application. Um, the way it's gonna work is, we're gonna go around the horn and ask a single question. Um, I'm gonna ask councillor Coker's questions because she's uh online, you know, listen only. So I'll ask hers and then we'll, we'll have an opportunity for a second question if there are councillors, if there's a councillor, that's okay.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, councillor Johnson, you wanna start this one?
Yeah, hi Trudy.
Hello.
Thanks for applying. Um, how long have you been in Oak Ridge and why are you interested in the seat?
Well, I was born, raised, left for thirty years and then came back and I'm interested in the seat. Um, because I would like to participate more so than what I do currently in a deeper level. And then gain also a better understanding of what Oak Ridge's needs are and how they can get met.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Trump. Uh, hi Trudy. So to me, uh, sometimes a face-to-face connection with people is important. Um, if elected, do you plan to try to attend meetings a person when available?
Absolutely. I like face-to-face too, as long as I'm done with things.
Good?
Yes.
So, um, councillor Coker's question is, what is your outlook for Oak Ridge?
Well, my outlook for Oak Ridge is um uh, I like the strategic plan. I hope that we can stick to that and, and follow it. And any kind of diversion that, that happens is a community united decision and choice. What is the biggest issue you would like to improve for Oak Ridge? Some of the examples I gave um are candidates where some people run on the public safety platform or bringing jobs and economic development to the community or better trust. There's kind of, everybody has like their, you know, like, everything multiple, but I'm curious what you really wanna dig into.
Well, definitely, I'm an animal advocate. And, and I definitely would like to have some of those issues addressed and and maybe tighten the belt on some of the ordinances and then also make some kind of connections where the community can have resources to go and get some of the issues resolved. Um, that will ease the burden of our police department. And then it's such a moment still for what my concerns are. But that would be my, my priority is helping the individuals when they've got that issues and, you know, the animal issues. I'm so excited.
Needs some payments.
Yeah. I thought I'd have that before I came, but I don't do any other kind of payments, so I'm, I'm, no, I'll save it for tonight. The other thing is um, better communication where the individuals, the citizens can, can really have somebody or some area where they can email questions, like everybody's email is available, but um more so of, you know, phone call or a text. I know that um when James was an officer, his text was available for, for um emergencies. Just as a friend and knowing that we have that confidence in, what do I do for this situation? Because it's a dangerous thing, you know, so that kind of availability on some of the offices, I know the people come, you know, say wow.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Um, how do you plan, if you were a councillor, to involve residents in the decision-making process for this town, for this city?
That's a good question, because it is one of my um things I've been thinking about lately. And it, I believe that offering up a space where individual assistants, first of all, are educated in what, what is happening. And, and the greatest would be if everybody could attend city council meetings and then they would be more informed. But a better information system for educating the citizens as to what say they have and what say they can do as far as participating.
Thanks.
Okay, my question is, um, you're, you're one of our most involved citizens when it comes to city committees and that kind of thing, which is great. But um, in a short, you know, very briefly, what would you describe the state of the city right now?
I would say um progressing. Definitely progressing. It's way different from when I was a kid. You know, and, and progress doesn't make, um, perfection doesn't say anything.
Okay, thank you. Uh, round two, councillor Johnson, do you have another question?
Yeah, uh, do you have any budgeting experience?
I did some on the budget committee when um Mr. Atha was here and, and this year, that's I think two thousand seventeen. Very briefly, um, and it is very intimidating. And I take off your calculators. Plus I operate, I'm sorry, plus I operate nonprofit where I'm budgeting this involved daily.
Got it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, well, Brian kind of led into it, but what committees and volunteer experience do you have um via private and city?
Um, like I say, in two thousand seventeen, um, I started with the budget committee. And then I started to attend city council meetings um from two thousand fourteen, I got here in thirteen. But in fourteen, um, I started attending the city council meetings and I can count on my hand having any I miss. And then I joined committees, um, which I have the admin, the public safety, the charter review and recently stepped down from the WAC. Um, and then I have, I was on the board of the advisory council for Lincoln Public Cal. Um, which um I stepped back from that with my daughter.
Thank you.
Um, councillor Coker's second question is, uh, what would you like to see changed? I know you kind of referred to the, the, the communication part, but is there anything more you wanna add to that answer?
Uh, I do hope to have safer access for um traveling, whether it be the university and broadly users in general.
Councillor Kennedy.
Uh, Trudy, if someone gave you a million dollars to spend in the city, any way you wanted, but it had to be in, for the city of Oak Ridge, how would you choose to spend it?
I don't Well, I definitely would have an expansion on this department to add animal control. Um, definitely would expand in the water comment to have the wetland balls. Um, availability and also in that was in the garden space, can we make a ten?
I wish.
I wish too. And then I can also definitely um.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Hammond? Off the hook if you. Thank you so much. Anybody you like. You don't have to sit in a, it's real tight where you can sit in the chair, you want.
It's the first test.
Well, Ms. Cameron, uh, thank you for applying. Um, the way it works is, we're gonna go around the horn uh, and each asked a single question. And uh then if there are any follow-up questions, we'll do it around one at a time. That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. And, Councillor Kennedy.
Hi Linda, thanks for applying. Uh, my question is, what is your approach to handling a controversial and complicated issue?
Well, I'll just step back for a moment and think um, what is the real controversy here? And also reflect back to whoever's asking the question or bringing it forward. You know, where are you coming from and what are the honors that brought you to this issue? And then I would look for um I guess some skills from my training and mediation where um you have two parties, say there are two sides to the controversy. And um you try to understand what is the story here, what's the story here? Where's the crossover? What do you have in common? What is this party wanting to do about? What is this party wanting to do about? And, or can we go forward?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, um. What is the biggest issue that you would like, that's facing Oak Ridge that you would like to improve? Um, some people, that is public safety, sometimes it's jobs and economic development or trust within the city and the citizens. What area really someone would really wanna make change?
I think I missed your word. What would I like to?
Improve or make change?
I thought you said improve, but I think it was one of them. Um, you know, there is, uh, there are quite a few things that rise to the top. And obviously, your question is, pick one.
Well, you could say more.
So I would say um stability and the financial department would help us get on even ground elsewhere. And in my uh letter of application, you know, I identified several areas that I would like to provide energy for. So, it all sort of fits together, financial stability, it's just the ability to do good. And it gives the city more confidence in our government. So that when rules are enforced, it means something that people can get behind it. Purification is right next door to code enforcement and my third one, anyway, um, the way things fit together. So I think I would start with the finances. They tried to put some money in the bank and about reserve account.
Councillor Trump.
Um, hi Linda. Uh, so what is your stance on what the city requires run versus what people desire? And in making decision on what people desire, how do you decide what is a majority?
What is a majority?
Yeah. Something I struggle with, so.
Well, yeah, I heard you say, Councillor Trump, that you're an honest guy, so that's an interesting question. You know, I have my self-taking issue with some of the surveys that are done in town. And I think um what I would like to see is a combination of the anecdotal, the storyline, the actual numbers, the survey results that come back. And putting up that all together and then really determining where's that message? Maybe not exactly the numbers, but what is the message behind the the big issue that rises to the top numerically? And then say, what is the message and we work on making things that that answers the question.
Nothing, any answers good.
So I believe councillor Coker is both, and you can hear and speak, councillor Coker, you have a question?
I do. Hello Linda. What is your out, um, what is your outlook on the future of Oak Ridge?
I've been here since two thousand eight. I feel very positive at this moment. I live in the uptown neighborhood and I'm really excited by the new businesses that are coming to town um in this area. And along Highway fifty-eight, I see people improving their property. Um, the stretch there for road suspension used to be the, uh, airport used to be and the Chinese restaurant from years ago. That was a huge improvement. Um, just the other day, I noticed that our store was improving their parking lot. And so all of those things to me seem like bright spots and we just have to keep going.
All right, councillor Johnson, do you have a question?
Yeah, hi Linda, thanks for applying. How long have you been in Oak Ridge and why are you interested in this seat?
I moved to Oak Ridge in two thousand eight and I'm interested in the seat because you know, we're gonna watch people on the sidelines, if you've seen me, you and I, we're both in the audience together and now you're up on the uh platform here. So um I think it's time for me to play a stronger role. I follow um the city government pretty closely. And I would like to be part of that decision-making. I think if I bring uh quite a bit of experience, that would apply to some of the issues that are facing the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my question is, if you were a mayor for a day, in a cold day in January, you're making a state of the city pitch, what would your, would your state of the city be? Brief.
No, state of the city. State of the city is usually a one-page or anything, so. Getting the, the bullet points, um, I've mentioned in some of my other answers, um, my answers are important. And we're making progress, I think as soon as the next audit from twenty-two, twenty-three is finalized and presented, we'll have more information. And then going forward, we're making progress in terms of stability and have a strategic plan that identifies what both the council and the citizens want to see happen. And I mentioned that in my letter of application that I would like to see progress toward those themes and subgoals in the um next year coming forward. So I would tie all that together. And as councillor Bjornson just asked, I feel we're on the upturn, so.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy, you have a second question?
Okay.
Um, so, what, what committees, volunteer experience working with the city, um, what, what experience do you have with that?
Well, I can't remember exactly when I started, but I was on the community services committee. And then um the, our city services were merged and I've been on that, I think continuously since the two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, so I'm there. Um, I joined the budget committee this year. And um some of you may have remembered that I was president of the chamber of commerce. And I attended all of the um city council meetings that I possibly could in order to uh provide a report, how we were spending the money in a chamber that the city gave to us. in order to, uh, provide a report how we were spending the money in a chamber that the city gave to us and be available for questions. I'm a member of the OIBA and helped with the, you know, the street, the, um, I worked on the express project, which probably includes and many other volunteers. The Chamber of Commerce did, um, a little bit of purification on Co-Loane over by the old, um, dis-sell course. Some of us worked together on that.
Thanks. Thanks. Counselor Coker, do you have a second question?
Hi, Linda. What would you like to see changed in Oak Ridge?
See change? You know, um, one thing I was looking at recently from Counselor Coker was code enforcement. Because I put it on my client letter. And, um, there's something in the Big Board in Cities, I think it's called Chapter 29, um, in State Municipal Code. I think these are recommendations for cities to adopt or model their code enforcement. And in reading that, um, I got a lot more interested in some of the details. And one of those is how citizens could be involved in helping with code enforcement. And how when things are, um, addressed quickly, it has a tendency to raise what they call social norms. Like, it's normal to keep your yard, you know, looking good. Or it's good to keep paint on your building. That's what people are doing here. And so what I would like to see more changes, raising the level of expectation in Oak Ridge about such things. That's my answer.
Counselor Bjornson, do you have another question?
Yep, and I kind of know a bit of this answer, but do you have any budgeting experience?
I ran a business for about 10 years in, um, here in Oak Ridge. It was restaurant and washing. And I was responsible for the bookkeeping, uh, along with our accountant. So I did a quick books and kept track of those things. I also joined the budget committee. And of course, the municipal budget is pretty large than what I was handling in my own business. Um, so those are the, the, the experiences that I ran with the budgeting.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Cameron? Thank you so much for applying and, uh, Angela, you're welcome to stay or you can sit down. All the other candidates, you want. Thanks so much for applying for the position. But yet the, uh, the application, uh, the way it works is we're gonna go around the horn and each counselor will have a question. And take whatever time you need to respond and then we'll go around a second time during any follow-up questions. Okay? That's great. Counselor Johnson, it's over to you for first question.
All right, thank you. Hi, hi, Paul. Thank you for applying. How long have you been in Oak Ridge and why are you interested in the seat?
Uh, this, I've been in Oak Ridge about three, four, five years now. First two years were basically remodeling every room of the house that we bought. That was our plan is to retire here and to live here the rest of our lives. I applied to the job because I think I'd be good at it. I've had a chance to meet almost all of the counselors now. I, I consider them highly, probably, yes, like, I can see his team that I work with apart. And I'm used to high-functioning teams, I've been in teams most of my life. Or I most enjoy myself, my life participating in them, I'm a member of them. It's, it's exciting. And I haven't had that for a while, so I'm retired, so looking forward to it.
Counselor Coker.
Thank you.
Counselor Coker, do you have a question?
I do. Hello, Paul. How are you?
Hello, I'm good.
Pretty good. Um, what is your future outlook for Oak Ridge?
Um, what do I want to, what do I see in the future? I think there's a lot of potential here. I have an advantage and disadvantage at one time as far as my job goes. As this job goes, I, I don't have a lot of relationships here and I don't have a lot of history. That works against me because I don't have the kind of relationships that are common to you. On the other hand, I don't have the experience with being the town that's gone through a deep depression and recession. But in a highly successful town, that, uh, room is wealthy, had good jobs, it's clean. And those are the values that I guess I carry with me from Iowa. But I would like to move some of those places, it's not the same town, it's not the same system. So, yeah, I would like it, or like a completely healthy town. We will focus on children, be focused on your children, you're doing the right thing. And all likelihood, so. That's kind of general, I know it's not specific, but I think it'll be very good.
Counselor Turner.
Hi, Paul. Um, so what committee slash volunteer experience do you have, um, here or other cities or in your personal life?
Um, I was in factory management. I worked for a couple of doors or, you know, it's called a court. I managed up to 60 people at one time in supervision. The best which are good that were women. It was a smaller piece or, but it was part of larger factory that had, that would process and last a little bit. Within that, I got to start and manage what they call a quality circle group, just employee center. Problem-solving group. You're getting very, you're getting very distinct processes and how you choose your projects. You're empowered to do those projects and it's for that to be for an hour of work. It's something special. I mean, the company are paid bonuses, they pay profit share. People on our work, retired as many years as could, they love warfare. The company respected their employees, didn't they? When I love Oak Ridge, I respect the people here, and there's a lot of potential here. But they just need a structure and have assets of agreed upon goal. So I, I'd like to get something, I'd like to share the experience being a member. So I'm happy taking a backseat, you know, those are happy. My best experience is when we call a certain competition or our, of our back, which is about 3,000 people. And I took to Cincinnati for national presentation. My women just did that, like, I will never forget that, so, we're all Cincinnati people, they're all Cincinnati. So I, I just find it incredibly enjoyable.
Counselor Paul.
Yes, uh, what's the biggest issue in Oak Ridge that you would like to improve or, um, be a part of improving? Um, some people, it's public safety, jobs and economic development, trust between citizens and the city. Really looking, what's your big thing you really want to make an impact here?
Well, one of the reasons we need your, uh, is, is that it's phenomenal for a city the size to have fire and safety personnel. I mean, most cities are very happy. So that's one of the reasons you came here because you like the infrastructure. Basically, what's the difference, what, I don't kind of make that personal, but it's an amazing service. Magis is structured into a lot of different things. Well, my focus would be on what's it gonna take for a job that will pay a family, be families. You can't live on waitress, you can't, I mean, it's a second job. You can't, you can't raise your hands, so. If you start, that's your goal. And you start training programs, remember people, make sure your school's highly functional. Get a guy like Dirk, pay prepare, go off to college, you know, repeat that experience, so. I think it's basically trying to raise money, put income in the bank. Not much is gonna get done here until we have one to do. So that would be my structure, of some structure and creating, you're gonna pay jobs. And the rest of all.
Counselor Kane.
If you were to receive a $1 million grant that you could have spent in this, for the city of Oak Ridge in any way that you chose, where would you spend it?
I would make sure that you, on this, you have electricity and income, you might have a small, you should, for what they need. They need utilities, they need ocean, ocean energy, they need sewage, they need all the things that they could do. And that comes. That'll say just so you have, you can't raise enough. So I'd say we want to make ourselves attractive. So, you know, infrastructure, you're trying to be aesthetic. I think the town can be much further than that. But if that's all, you know, you know. I think we need to change management. But the infrastructure, that's gonna be smart.
Thank you.
So my question is, I see, personally, I see that cities' biggest problem is, is debts are expensive as far as our revenue. Um, you talked about, um, job creation. What's, I mean, if, if that's your primary way of increasing revenue in a city, if that is, how would you go about, what would be your first steps to job creation in a city? It's, you know, it's, it sounds great, but it's really hard for me to happen.
Oh, yeah, it's really hard. With that, nationally, people were hiring jobs gravitating towards urban areas. It's because they have better facilities. You know, they've got better medical care, you know, better streets, our housing is more acceptable in many ways. So I think we have to do simplest things to do some purification in the city. I, I probably shouldn't bring this, but I've been doing it. I was almost in tears when the hybrid project saw me. I thought it's just, you had a chance for millions of dollars to the community. Aesthetically made it much prettier, it's safer, and sidewalks and trees. Things that most of the, most of the people that have to go, they never get on highways, so why not make a highway? Most tracks, like, you gotta get them stopped, you gotta get it in town before they get investigated. So I know that's how the country is, you know, all of our decision council is, it's one of the quality circles out here. You learn already what's the decision change for. So that's what I was trying to, we'll be, that's our voice. And I learned a lot and did a lot of studying in the district council and the chase, so it's hard, so you have those. I understand that separation and talk to them a lot, and to you guys both, understanding, so. I think it's a good thing, I think it'll be good things. So I'm happy about it, supportive of it, I can't wait for it. But one thing I need to say, um.
Thank you for your answer. Uh, so for a second question, if you had one, uh, Counselor Johnson, do you have a second question?
Yeah, do you have any budgeting experience?
Do you have any budgeting experience?
Well, I had, what I, what I managed for approximately 25 years was called management by objectives. And you had to set your labor budget at the beginning of the year. And it couldn't be the same as here anymore. It's always going to be better than here before. Same things with material costs, same things with disposable supplies. We also had quality, quality numbers that we had to fit. Uh, safety, which was your primary objective, safety, you were in big trouble. So, yeah, I am used to that and I didn't do it at first when I went there. It's a day shift, eventually I would set it as, I should have jumped, sorry, and then you stayed. I did that with my, my supervisor. And then I had to make them, I got a lot responsible with, right, it's my job.
Thank you. Counselor Coker, do you have a second question?
Paul, what would you like to see changed in Oak Ridge?
What would you like to see changed in Oak Ridge?
Confidence. I think, so. I think that I wasn't here and I think it's pretty clear from a sociological point of view that the town's been, has been depressed. I want to go, I think we underestimate ourselves, we go too many times, we go, oh, we're over, which we can't do that. You know, we're too small, we can't do this, we're not deserving. I, I don't want to buy it, I think I want to give people optimism. But this is a good place, you're one of the most beautiful places in the world. You're in a national forest, there's gotta be jobs that could be created by the national forests. You know, I don't have any problems negotiating with the federal government to create jobs and secure people's livelihoods. So I think it's just a change to move to optimism.
Counselor Turner.
All right, it's kind of a weird question, but, uh, what is your stance on what the city requires to run versus what people desire? And based on that, how do you decide if you have a majority of people in your decision?
Well, that's a good question. You can play us, uh. I think leadership has to consider what the people want. Leadership doesn't always do exactly what, what folks want. In other words, if I, if I can have a competent source, well-educated person with experiences and just ideas, the majority of people go, well, he's solid judgment. No, I'm gonna go with a person who's as trained, has experience, has an education, with that kind of approach. So I guess it's part of this association, if we did that kind of thing, we were, if you were talking, I could have, right? People search up on our org.
Counselor Paul, you have a second question?
Yeah, I do. Um, you, you mentioned, um, that you were almost in tears after the lane reduction was squashed, but that didn't happen. Um, it's kind of part of, on show's question. So in that instance, we had almost 70 people lined up to speak in opposition against a lane reduction. Not just the whole TSP, but about the lane reductions specifically. Only six people spoke in favor. And there was more people that just left because the meeting went to 11 something.
Right.
So, um, you know, for me, that was a hard position because I do see pros of the whole entire TSP. And obviously, I want the highway to look beautiful and it does look beautiful to me, but there are also cons to it. So my question is, when you have the pros and cons, but you have an overwhelming amount of community that is not accepting of this, doesn't want it, and then you have what appears to be a small majority. Are you the voice of the citizens or are you the voice of what you want to see?
I think the voice is for progress. I don't know what else to say. I, I will go by the facts. I understand, I trust in science. People who designed roads, they did a great job. There were several designs that are all identical about around the city, around the state. They're well-accepted, they're going through, and I think people, I think they're definitely not stupid. You know, but if you present the facts and reality, that yes, we're gonna get a tremendous improvement in the city, we're gonna get bike paths, we're gonna get curves, we're gonna have a chest of fabric. But higher, statistically bars improved in this town. I think if you give the facts to do it as, as much as we can, that they'll check strong. And I'm gonna take it off, I'm here, it's 41. It's the wrong decision, I, or I guess, if I lose, I lose, so what? No farther behind than we are right now.
Counselor Kane, same question?
No, I'll pass.
Well, we certainly appreciate your application. And, uh, you're welcome to stay in the room or you can go back out. And we've got one more candidate. So where are you going? You don't, you don't have to be on the grilling table, you can sit on the seat, or whatever you're comfortable with.
Awesome.
So this was, Jennifer, thank you for submitting your application. We're very grateful that you put the time to do that.
You're welcome. I hope for all of you to listen to it.
So the way it's gonna work is we're gonna go around the horn and each counselor will get a single question. Uh, and you can respond as you see fit. And then, uh, we'll come back if, if there'll be second questions, follow-up questions, we'll allow that. And, uh, yeah, just speak your mind.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So we'll start with councillor Canyon.
Okay, uh, my, my fir- first question for you is, how would you, if you were a councillor, how would you involve the residents in your decision-making processes for the city?
I'm not knowing whether it already exists, I know that there's talk about neighborhood groups, and I think that would be an excellent place to start. If there are neighbors who regularly know each other and get together, and will ask to be a part. If number one, help them know, but also involve them, which I'm reading, I think they're reading about, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What is the biggest issue that you would like to be a part of to improve for Oak Ridge? Some of the big topics have been public safety, jobs, and economic development, and building trust between citizens and the city. Doesn't have to be those three, those are just generally some big ones.
No, it's good because it wouldn't be that. Uh, with the backgrounds that I've had and education with the European faith is. Um, and looking at the demographics that I saw in, I read the strategic plan, and was so informed by the demographics of this town. And to know that half the town are young and old, and so the burden is on the middle. And it's not a wealthy town, so there needs to be some ways that, that one can help families help kids. Uh, I know that one of the problems is nobody says, uh, there's got to be something here that the kids learn, love. That brings them here and keeps them here, or, or brings them back later.
Thank you.
Councillor Darnson?
Um, so what committees, uh, slash volunteer experience, um, whether it's within the city or in private uh, industry, have you experienced or done?
Uh, today, it would be, I'm on the charter associate committee, and I just joined the administrative device review. So that in terms of Oak Ridge. Um, I'm seeing the Eugene Peace Fire, and my money back, I'm not going to let it transfer that, so there's, yeah. I've been involved in writing postcards for candidates across the country, so there's been that kind of, of that. So, um, that's a good start.
Thanks. Councillor Coe, do you have a question?
What is your future outlook for Oak Ridge?
Uh, my outlook would be that I hope we can all make a succeed, because I have a mortgage. Uh, I would love the town to come back to what I'm hearing from all the people who have been here a long time, and what it once was. I'd love to experience that.
Councillor Darnson, do you have a question?
Yeah, hi Chris, thank you for applying. Um, how long have you been in Oak Ridge, and why are you interested in this seat?
I moved here in twenty-twenty, right as COVID, I came with COVID. Uh, and, uh, why do I want this seat? I think everybody has to give what they can to make their little world that, uh, my, uh, some work I've done has been out. And, and reaching out to the country, uh, living in a small town, I'd be missing an opportunity if I had something to offer, a small place. And so this is my home, this is where I want to be, so I need to make a vote, and that means I can come here. I'm going to go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my, my question is, um, if where you see, you know, your, your coming year in twenty-twenty gives you a unique perspective, because you don't know the past. It's heard from some, but you don't know, so I think it gives you a unique perspective. So your snapshot, what would you say the state of the city is now? Challenges, you know, things?
I understand that I feel like I wanted to join and argue that it's not the best place to be in this town. Uh, not all the citizens are fond of you. Uh, and I understand that you can be that and get a job, though. I would love to know the history that I'm missing when I hear bits and pieces from everybody, and I don't know. So it'd be nice if there was a rolling, yeah, we had some bad stuff, and here it is. And, uh, so I think my impression is the city's trying to emerge from that, and, uh, hope it succeeds.
Thank you. Councillor Canyon, have a same question? Yeah? Councillor Darnson?
Um, I'll ask my kind of hard, weird question again. Uh, what is your stance on what, on what the city requires to run versus what the people desire? And how do you decide if it's a majority of the people, based on what you're hearing from the people?
I don't have any problem with what's required. I, I have no land of job positions, and I couldn't get one for any of the committees that I'm on, or so I'm glad to see something actually in my neighborhood, you have to get a bit here. Uh, I don't know what the people want beyond what that is. Can you answer me that?
Oh, I mean, uh, so let's say, uh, just as an example, your, uh, water treatment facility is failing and needs to be replaced, and, uh, people loudly proclaim, no, we don't want to do that. But the city requires it, needs it, and how would you go about? You know, would you try to get the people on board, or would you just go forward and say, we're going to replace this water treatment center?
I'll need to go ahead and do it, but to tell people why. And here's the neighborhood groupings again, um, there are a lot of people who don't care what goes on, as long as they live their life where they want to, I think there are a lot of people who uh, have misconceptions about what actually happens, because there's not enough opportunity for them to fill the seats, to, I think, the more aboard you. I come from a Quaker background in terms of the education, and one of the main philosophies was, we all have stories to tell. And if we tell our story, we'll find that we're more likely to be on different. And I, I think that's what's missing, in a small family, it ought not to be that. We should have the opportunity for people to tell their stories, and then I said, hey, you know, there is somebody who knows more than I do about water. Uh, and they might not like me because I do it, but I think it's the right thing.
Thanks. Councillor Coe, do you have a second question?
Uh, no, I don't, she's already touched faces on it, thank you for applying, Chris.
And?
And lastly, councillor Darnson, do you have a second question?
Yeah, do you have any budgeting experience?
Yes, uh, on a school-wide basis. So, small.
Okay, thank you.
Your last question before we thanks, Ian, for applying, um, you're welcome to stay and, you know, start the regular session here in a couple of minutes. Thanks very much.
I agree with everybody else.
Uh, James? Do we need a bottom break before we go to the last one? Long, I do. Okay, okay, well, uh, what do you think, James?
Oh, five. Can you pause, pause your praise, knock stop, it's twenty-four?
Yep, you did.
All right, next is roll call, Jackie, would you go roll, please?
Yes, councillor Coker.
Here.
Councillor Bjornson.
Here.
Councillor Tarman.
Here.
Mayor Ketchum.
Here.
Councillor Kenyon.
Here.
Councillor Hallit.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next is additions, corrections, and adjustments to the agenda, any councillors have any changes they'd like to make, recommendations? Yes? Nothing here, all right?
No.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
I would like to, uh, request an update from our city administrator on the status of implementing a collection agency. And I also wanted to add a brief segment on annual reviews for, for our point keys.
Okay, James, are you ready, you're prepared to talk the first one?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And let's put that, where do you want to put it, James, eleven point four?
We can actually include it in eleven point three, that.
I got it.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, next, moving on to public comment, and we'll, uh, start on the Zoom platform, is there any public comment on the Zoom? Has he heard in the room, any public comment in the room? Wait, all right.
Sorry, interruptible, both of her topics are going to be under ten, eleven point four?
Yes, eleven point three would be the collection agency issue.
And the
Ten point eight would be the annual review.
Wouldn't a point, or a point that reviews being in the business from the city council and not under the city administrator?
That's what I'm saying, ten point two. Eleven point three, question.
All right, uh, six is mayor comments and announcements, nothing tonight. Uh, then moving on to councillor comments and announcements, the comments and announcements. All right, uh, eight, the consent agenda, like your motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll stick back.
All right, question made by councillor Tarman. Subjected by you want, Councillor Canyon? Uh, I'll favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. Bye.
Any opposed? All right, those passes. Nine, the point was nine point one, James, one of the races.
Sure, um, well, so we are now going to be, uh, voting, uh, for the open city council position at the interviews. Um, I noticed on the bill, I, I made one small or significant error, and that is in the procedure of how we're going to vote, so uh, every councillor has a written ballot, three of them actually, for round one, two, and three, before and four. So during the first round, which is about to start, every councillor will vote a next, or a second. And if they wish, I will collect those ballots, once they're all collected, uh, we will then ask for voice vote from, uh, our folks online first, I said after extended. Um, so they will tell us who they are voting for, I will record it on a piece of paper here. And then I will reallow, uh, every councillor's name and who they voted for. Um, we do not have, uh, four, or more votes for one single candidate, we will, uh, opt to vote hitters, progress to the second round. Obviously, it, it, I think it could be a two, two, and two tie, uh, so maybe three candidates on second round, but we'll, we'll see what happens. So that is, that is the process. There any questions?
Okay. Got a vote?
Make sure you sign your, uh, piece of paper if you didn't. Okay, I have, I'm only in for in-person votes. So we can now ask our online folks who they're voting for.
Councillor Darnson, can you cast your vote, please?
Yeah, my vote is for Kelly Brewer.
Thank you. Councillor Coe, would you cast your vote, please?
My vote is for Kelly Brewer.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and councillor Kenyon has voted for Judy Hammond. Councillor Hallit has voted for Kelly Brewer. Interception has voted for Linda Hammer. Councillor Tarman has voted for Linda Hammer. All right, so our top voter, who votes is Kelly Brewer. Second is Linda Hammer. Uh, but of course, you have a candidate who received four votes, so we will now proceed to round two. Uh, councillors can now only vote between Kelly and Linda.
If you can proceed with. Councillor Darnson, can you cast your vote, please?
Yes, my vote is for Kelly Brewer.
Thank you, councillor Coe.
My vote is for Kelly Brewer.
Thank you.
Councillor Canyon has voted for Kelly Brewer. Councillor Hallit has voted for Kelly Brewer. Councillor Tarman has voted for Linda Hammer. Interception has voted for Linda Hammer. So with four votes, Kelly Brewer is our any questions?
And for all the candidates, thank you so much for applying, and understand there's a general election coming up soon, so don't be afraid to put your name ahead on that. So, thanks so much for applying, it was great to get any applications. Yeah, I understand, take care of yourself. James, you deliver the oath.
All right, under our, uh, city charter, you're required to take an oath of office. So if you would stand and raise your right hand, we will repeat, uh, oath, and you can repeat after me. I, Kelly Brewer.
I, Kelly Brewer.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the constitution and the laws of the United States.
And state order.
State order.
And of the over state charter.
And of the over state charter.
Ordances and council rules of procedure.
Orders and council rules of procedures.
For the city of Oak Ridge.
For the city of Oak Ridge.
And that I will faithfully and honorably.
And faithfully and honorably.
Perform the duties. Of the office for which I'm about to assume.
For which I'm about to assume.
You're good, and you can sign here, please.
What did you do? How did you do that?
Uh, yeah. So I know what you said, I have anything for all of you.
Well done, James.
All right.
Now, how to do that?
Yeah.
No, that's
That's
Oh, yeah.
Set a new councillor on it.
Welcome aboard. Good to go, James.
Yes.
All right, we're now at ten business from the city council, ten point one is the wax solar feasibility study or F P responses.
Right, so as council will recall, we've, um, we've got a thirty thousand dollar grant to do a solar, uh, feasibility study for the WAC. Which was solar power and backup generator. Uh, but A R P, we got two responses. And the WAC subcommittee reviewed, um, both of the applicants. One was WUMAC and the other was the Oregon Clean Power Cooperative. The committee voted to accept the bid from Oregon Clean Power Cooperative. And Kurt Wilson, uh, then both companies and said they were both viable to do this project. And, uh, yeah, we just need councillors' final approval on that and they will, they're ready to start immediately.
Okay, do I hear your motion?
I move to approve awarding the wax solar feasibility study to the Oregon Clean Power Cooperative.
A second?
Second.
All right, question made by councillor Kenyon, second by councillor Tarman. Any discussion on this or questions to staff?
Yes. Okay. Um, does this, um, does this come with warranty and, um, you know, all the things, the backup, the the panels themselves to make sure that they're in full working order for a long period of time?
Well, so with these feasibility studies, they're not actually installing, they've been installed.
Okay, I missed the last sentence, sorry.
Right, I know it seems like a lot of money, it's thirty thousand dollars, but this company said they could do a current ten. Which we don't need to keep extra money, but, uh, but they are warranted as far as the business is insured. And that was all betted by Kurt Wilson.
Perfect.
So, um, Kurt didn't think that Obridge would have the issues with well.
Okay, and they may, they may find out this. They need more money up than the ten.
But he also went over like WUMAC was including quite a bit of stuff that we really didn't need. That already is priority, I heard.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? Yeah, can you tell her vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Tarman.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Councillor Brewer.
Hi.
Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Bjornson.
Hi.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All right, on to ten point two, Bus Fair twenty twenty-three report by Brock Butterfield, James, and you sent for
a simple introduction that, um, it was requested by council when the funding was awarded, that he now can present his report before the festival, which included the packet and they brought a little bit of time to, uh, over and answer any questions also.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, guys. Um, so the purpose of this report is to help council and citizens of Obridge understand how the R T M P and T R T funds that were used to create overnight stays to simulate a local economy from out of town visitors. So with that, I'm going to kind of go over some numbers from the report and, uh, if you guys want to save your questions for after, it's probably better. Uh, total attendee count for two thousand and twenty-three, we had nine hundred and fifty-four people. Uh, this number is based off of the wristbands given out to the attendees. It does not include kids, so when others, they were free to get in. We had a hundred and sixty-two unclaimed tickets, of which the majority were from twenty twenty to buyers when the event was supposed to come. So half of us had been claimed, we would have seen a whole, uh, over a hundred less attendees from twenty nineteen, which was the first year the bus fair was held. We saw a total of, uh, four hundred and twenty-seven people in twenty nineteen. We were able to capture two hundred and sixteen surveys from the nine hundred and fifty-four attendees by offering free raffle tickets to survey takers. Uh, surveys were not required, they were just encouraged and you were trying to bribe them, obviously with practical tickets to go out and give us some data. Uh, from the survey data, we were able to see that the majority of attendees learned about Bus Fair for social media. Sixty-five percent had never been to Obridge prior. Uh, attendees stayed at the harbor, in the Obridge Inn and Suites, spaces that are in park, Airbnb, and camping as well. Attendees arrived as early as five days before the event and stayed as long as four days after. Forty-six percent planned to recreate while in town, seventy-four percent planned by groceries or food while in town. Fifty-four percent believe in Bigfoots. You gotta keep the surveys fun, otherwise you will online follow up. Uh, between the survey and the online data, we can see that the attendees came from twenty-five different states and two different, uh, Canadian provinces. When comparing that to the data from twenty nineteen, we had twenty-seven different states and three different Canadian provinces. We had enough interest from attendees who wanted to stay after the bus fair to explore towns surrounding national forests and eat at restaurants. Uh, we created a small event called Linger Longer, where forty-plus attendees stayed in the town as long as four days after the bus fair. The bus fair ran additional days at Greenwater Park to accommodate this. Uh, the total cost of the event came out to be just a little over thirty-eight thousand dollars for a three-day event. Total money invested back into the local community by the bus fair was twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. And as a reminder, the total, uh, R T M P, T R T funds that was awarded to the bus fair was twelve thousand five hundred dollars. The bus fair also worked with and supported the Obridge Disco Club and a five hundred dollar donation to that local nonprofit. The bus were also donated five hours of volunteer time to the maintenance unit at Greenwater Park, a two hundred and fifty-dollar donation in service. While dealing with the city double booking Greenwater Park, another large event was challenging, we did learn how to operate in a much smaller space, giving us an idea of how much we can expand in the future when we're not starting to park with another event. As far as how the event did financially, by home before close to the end of this month, and we're moving into the abandoned R P on St. Mary's Road. All jokes aside, the bus fair is able to break even again to help with the R T M P and T R T funds, uh, as well as the park viewers. So moving forward, the bus fair will continue to offer educational seminars, convert it to less tours, art, food vendors, live music, and gaming. Uh, we were fortunate enough to collaborate with Tiny Home Tours, a YouTube channel with over one point three million subscribers. They filmed over a dozen tours of buses, vans, and other nomadic rigs while at the bus fair. Uh, each video description on YouTube mentions that it was filmed at the bus fair. Next year's event will happen on June twenty-first to the twenty-third, so mark your calendars. And yes, we have confirmed that the city has the bus fair marked down on the calendar. Uh, be the only event of its kind, we see many opportunities for bringing in more out-of-town visitors to stimulate the local economy for a week. We hope that we can continue to receive support from the city council, the city, and most importantly, our community and business owners who benefit from the bus fair. Thank you.
Thanks, Brock. Yeah, do we have any questions for Brock? Online?
I just have a statement. Um, this was my second year volunteering to help out the bus fair and
Thank you.
for providing me, I had a great time. Um, the first year I was part of the survey part and I personally got to meet people from all over the world that came to the first one. And I participated in the survey thing and it was just so much more. It was incredible hearing the stories from people, how much people really got to see Obridge, how much they really enjoy our community, and just seeing that perspective from people that live somewhere really far away. Um, there was a lot of people that don't have schoolies that were coming in interest, especially to the seminars. I think the Linger Longer was a really awesome opportunity for people to come to that event and then stay and then, you know, go to our restaurants and all the other things they have to offer, so who knows on that part. And the Bigfoot thing really was a question on the survey. Um, but, um, after the event, like you just mentioned, I have seen the exposure on TikTok and, um, IG and Facebook just really blow up. It's all over. I see all the time my dad is a bus guy, so he's in Michigan and he's constantly like, oh, what's Brock doing next? You know? It's just, it really, Brock has really put Obridge out there in a different avenue other than biking, not being as biking. But it's another thing that I think Obridge is really growing into, so I'm just really excited that our council is supporting the bus fair.
Thank you. That's good.
Um, thank you, Brock. I know that your event was a huge success and that's really awesome. Um, I just wondered if you happened to know, because I didn't see it in the report, how much money ended up going back to the, um, Lane County rural tax or whatever, um. You know, for the camping and stuff and people pay for lodging and you would pay the roof tax on that? You know how much ended up going back?
Um, that would be zero. Uh, that is news to me, uh, that I is this something that anybody requires to pay to Lane County for room?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Only a, or rent or overdid the suites or, I mean, you know, the guys that say, um, guys who are on the same, rework their T R T or room tax.
I think you should probably call Lincoln and get you some information and I'm pretty sure you're supposed to pay room tax.
But if you know how many people are staying in hotel, that gives some idea of how much went back on the your team.
Yeah, um, do you have any familiar ways to track room stays? It seems incredibly challenging when you officially have other events going on in town. Uh, is there any, uh?
It's, I mean, you always give us by far the most detailed reaction report of any event. Hands down. No one else has ever been able to give us any specific figures room stays, um, especially we have to ask every hotel owner to
I think the simplest way would be to see if there was a spike in T R T revenue when it comes to the city, but you're kind of
But there was two events going on, so it'd be hard to tell which was, actually three events going on, so it'd be hard to tell which one. So I think really the only solid way to do it would be to ask the hotel lodging to participate.
Sure.
And track it to some degree. I know the vast majority of the people that were here for the gravel grinders camp. I think, and, um, I think you know too.
Yeah, so that's a good question. Uh, so gravel grinders in the O, they also had a tamper's pay to camp. So, um, are we, are we asking them this same question? Um, and have they been able to give a report back?
Um, I'm not sure if they, I don't think they got any award, I think.
So, so just to make sure I understand the question, so, uh, if an event is awarded R T M P and or T R T funds and they are charging for camping, then they're required to pay money back into the R T M P or T R T funding?
I would like to say that it has nothing to do with that you were awarded any funding.
Correct.
Zero to do with that. Any hotel, Airbnb, uh, motel, camping facility, anything that charges for overnight stays in Lane County is supposed to collect uh, a tax and forward it to Lane County. That's how the money is generated in order for us to get money to distribute.
Okay, so back to my last question then. If gravel grinders, which also charge for camping for their attendees in N B O, were, are they also aware of this and are they paying?
That I don't know because they're not here and nor have they been.
Okay.
It was just a question I came up with with just now.
And in the past, uh, has higher events charged camping?
I know that Randy Dyrleene did when he did N B O years ago.
Okay, um, yeah, so as far as, uh, doing my research on this, um, on Lane County, uh, yes, so where, where, where are you finding some permission?
I'll get in touch with you via email. I'll get you the information. Oh, yeah, moved to the state, so I gotta, I gotta get a new contact.
Okay, so I'll wait for you to, uh, provide that information. And then, yeah, okay.
And I just wanted to, I would think, so, uh, city council did give financial support to gravel, right?
Yeah. Did they?
Fee waiver, didn't we?
Fee waiver.
Yeah.
Wasn't T R T or anything. But I think there was some point when council was taking all the new repurposed
Yeah.
Uh, would take R T M P funds
Pay for keyway.
and pay the city for the fee waiver.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify that, that we did also support.
But not in, you know, necessarily.
Sure, and, yeah. So in this case, when I track my statement of the bus for breaking even, it sounds like we're not going to break even, shit. Sounds like there's money that is potentially owed. Um, but you sort of like to understand more about that because the way it is structured and the, the business is structured as an event as opposed to a lodging operation.
And there, there may be an exception for events. I don't know that we'll check the state, like, you don't see that, so make sure.
I'll find out for you, give you all the information you need.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, I said you found this information somewhere already, then. Okay. Um, I think the last comment I wanted to make was, uh, Christine, you reminded me of this, uh, as we're talking about people who stayed longer for Linger Longer, and we had a lot of feedback, uh, from people that stayed, just how nice people are here in, in Obridge. And I want them to be careful, you're going to get stuck here like I did. So, uh, you know, that's something we should all really be proud of, that we have obviously visitors that come for the first time and they just talk about, it was non-stop, you know, and a Happy Belly Burger and like many events, you know, so nice. You know, Shelley and the other rain, and people just had really good things to say about our community, our community members, so let's, let's take some pride in that, you know.
Thank you. I was just looking up exemptions and, um, it says those with fewer than thirty days of rentals in the calendar year beginning January first, twenty twenty rentals by transient lodging intermediaries are not eligible for this exemption. So I'm not sure what that means for, like, that might be a new new rule.
So, uh, if I understand that correctly, that translates to because we have less than thirty days of actual lodging, that we would be exempt from?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
I think I know what you're reading, what I was talking about, because I'm friends with motel owner.
Mm-hmm.
When a customer of theirs registers for more than thirty days at a time, they don't have to pay because they're considered yeah, because they're not considered transient anymore. So, um, that's, that's probably what that rule is pertaining to.
But this really is an issue for Brock, for the city.
Sure, yeah.
That's good. I really appreciate the effort you put into hosting the event and I think it brought a lot of people and it was great to see each other.
Yeah, thank you for going as well. And if you guys remember, uh, Mayor was one of our judges for uh, taking a lot of schools over there, thinking again, interrupting, so, so, thanks, Brock.
So, thank you.
I also wanted to thank you for stepping up the plate, giving us this report, because a lot of the other events, all you, we contribute a lot of funding to your event, but the other events that we have don't do such an out of presentation for us and put so much data up for us. I wish more of them did, but really thank you, thank you, thank you, Brock.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it.
Anyway, you know, the goal is to, to eventually grow this, that, towards the same stuff you don't need to ask for every year. So, um, with redoing the event, that was extremely difficult. There was a lot of financial stuff there, so I can't even counsel for the amount that it was awarded, really did a lot, so, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Brock. All right, moving on to ten point three, non-resident voluntary P T issue, okay?
Thank you. All right, so councillor, we're passing through, uh, Alright, so councilor, that's the uh. Is the annual fee for non-resident library cards from fifteen dollars a year to thirty dollars a year. That was approved by the uh administrative advisory committee after researching what other cities aren't doing. However, our librarian, Georgie, has expressed concerns that this increase may prevent some of our. Non-resident members from being able to afford that. He issued like this the annual fee uh lowered. Because she would also should be, I mean, to explain a little bit more why she believes this.
So my issue is small, but this is important to me. Um, the libraries are a most sophisticated institution. It's not just for the well-to-do. They can buy their books. A library is meant to provide books for those who can't afford them. The library should be accessible to as many people as possible. Society is a whole benefit, it's for educated people. I have an average of forty city, out of the city, art holders. These families are frequent users of the library and I know them well. I fear that about twenty of them will not be able, half of them will not be able to, will have difficulty coming up with thirty a year. Um, the total revenue of the city of the forty. Art holders at fifteen dollars per car is six hundred. And if only twenty art holders are able to pay the thirty dollars, that total is six hundred. No loss to the city, but the loss to the families who cannot use the library can't be valued. But if the castle fee should be considered the doubling of the fees for the city homeowners. My plea.
Thanks, Georgie.
I have some questions I could ask her before.
Uh, I'm making a motion. I'm going to reduce the annual fee for non-residents to twenty dollars effective immediately.
But your second?
Second. I get that.
Okay, I was made a councilor second by first of the person, yay, councilor Brewer. Um, okay, this is questions, discussion.
I just thought of this, but another option for council would be to make a motion to allow the librarian. Uh, to waive or reduce the fee after discretion. Just a matter of idea.
Thank you, I agree. Um, I did some more research today. I will let you know I'm on the committee. That made the recommendation to increase it to thirty dollars. And we did a lot of research in Lane County libraries all over Lane County. What are they charging their out of area residents? And ninety percent of them are charging fifty. Dollars annually, just, I'm just pointing that out, oh. Uh, if you don't mind, let me finish and then we'll come back to you. Um, so another thing that I did catch though, while I was reviewing it again today to make sure that we, you know. Did our due diligence in looking these up. Um, is that some libraries have reduced fees for people sixty-five and older. And people seventeen and under. Um, and I wanted to suggest to the council that I would be completely open to that, having a reduction. For out of area residents that are um. Teeners or children. Uh, like twenty dollars. Would be my suggestion.
Any other questions, comments? Um, is there a possibility of having a income base reduction or waiver? I mean. I don't know the legality to that for the city, but.
I mean, I'm sure that's an option, but I only want to point out that every Oak Ridge citizen that pays property tax and businesses. Are paying and they don't get a waiver. Just wanted to point that out.
Georgie.
Well, you've been paired the other communities, Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge is sort of unique and we have a lot of poor. Families and elderly families. But the poor families have a lot of children, but a lot of our art holders from out of city are not. Don't have children who are not sixty-five. So it would help for those, but it wouldn't help that middle group.
What's the fee for Oak Ridge citizen versus an out of, what's the fee for an Oak Ridge citizen versus an out of city?
Yeah, for.
Where did the out of state or out of area people come from? I mean, we're kind of cut off. So my, my question is, are you talking about Westford or? Uh, like where, yeah, where would that, would that be like out of bounds or out of the boundaries? So they're technically still Oak Ridge citizens.
No.
I mean, not according to their zip code. Yeah, that's, that's, that would be my question because like when you. When you put down your address and you live up High Prairie. Your city is Oak Ridge, right?
Yeah, the province is, I think the library budget is thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And then probably most of that is paid with property taxes and you are only a city living in North Carolina.
Okay, so with that said, how many of the people that are coming um out of area are um unhoused? Do you have a lot of people that are unhoused that are?
Not unhoused, no.
Okay, so this.
Other questions? Uh, online, any questions from?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
How many non-resident uh people right now have library cards or apply for them?
Forty, oh, library cards in general, everyone?
No, the non-resident.
Non-resident. Or give or take, you know, because they. If they expired and then they come in and they got all expired in time, so it's around forty.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Brewer, you have anything?
Oh, mayor, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question to don't. So with your, you said with children, so would that mean if, take myself for example, if I lived out of. City and I came to get a membership for my kids to check out books there. Would that suffice? That what you're saying? So a parent came in and they were wanting a membership for their children to get books.
That's what other libraries are doing.
Okay. So it's, it's a family wants.
Is a, is a card good for the whole families? Okay.
Okay, it's not just for the specific child.
One of those on cards is responsible for the late fees. All right, any other questions? The motion was uh to reduce the annual fee for non-residents to twenty dollars effective immediately. Yeah, I got your talk over, please.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Counselor Coker.
Hi, hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Hollit.
Hi. Hi.
Did you say I?
Uh, hi.
Counselor Tarmen.
I am.
Counselor Kenyon.
Yay.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
I hope you cares, uh. And then went for surplus police vehicles, okay, take care.
All right, um, I'm sure most folks have noticed there's a lot of, I'm gonna uh. I think the police department sitting in the parking lot and needing a. Ambulance arm over there, uh, you like to get rid of some. Uh, we were requesting council place eleven total vehicles on surplus twist. Uh, this doesn't mean we're gonna get rid of all eleven. This is actually, we need some of them, but it gives the police department the ability to. And trades like we can trade in two pretty iffy cars when they get better ones, et cetera, so, um. Yeah, we're asking for initiative and a lot of these are just fully scrapped. Doors and stuff, okay, we've been using parts, so that is for us.
Okay, I hear a motion.
Make a motion. I move to declare eleven city-owned vehicles listed above as surplus and allow the police chief and city administrator to dispose of them at their discretion via sale, trade, auction, or scrap. With all proceeds of any potential sales or trades, go back to the police department.
Second thought. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Um, two questions. One is, um. Are these all different vehicles from the ones that we surplus about a year ago?
Some of them are the same, uh, we just.
Why do we need to re-surplus?
They're different. The surplus I remember last time was the ambulance from the fire. There was two vehicles from the fire department. It wasn't police.
There's an ambulance on here.
That's a different ambulance. It's a different ambulance.
Oh, okay.
Uh, frankly, because I didn't have enough time to go research all. A whole minutes to figure out.
Okay. So then my second question would be on this particular ambulance. Do we want, um. That money, if that sells, to go back to the police department or separate that out and have it go to the fire department like we did the last one?
So actually that um vehicle was given to the police department, uh, few years ago, so it is on the police department. They're gonna use it for SWAT and man and stuff like, not SWAT, but.
What's your?
Yeah. So it is the police department.
Okay.
It's not white ones.
Any questions? James, you're going to dispose of these vehicles in accordance with chapter nine and our early. I'm tracking this. Okay. All right, nothing else. Jack, call for both please. The motion is to declare the eleven city-owned vehicles listed above as surplus. And allow the police chief and city administrator to dispose of them at their discretion. Via sale, trade, or auction, or scrap, all proceeds of any potential sales or trades to go back to the police department. Jack, Ikey?
Counselor Hollit.
I think you.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Tarmen.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi, thanks, Jackie. Motion passes. On to your ten point five, publishly, publishly, publicly, the municipal court docket on the city website.
All right, during their August meeting, the public safety committee voted unanimously uh to recommend city council, the city council. Request that the Oak Ridge community board begin posting their court docket on the city website. One week before each municipal court date. The details of the posting, the dating time of the hearing, the defendant, the case or citation number. And the uh charter violation of all in place. G R is supportive of this idea because um it's will increase transparency, government assistance to know. Police department and municipal courts are doing. A lot of small towns don't do this, at least they don't do it online. Some small towns do post it on read or worse. Programs that are in advance. But not a lot, at least locally. Um, however, she does. Get a bunch of her budget. I use the word uh request that the unique force start doing this. I think this was. Charter um separation of powers we can't have domain, the meaning word uh to do this, but. To the meaning word, but it is possible to. What's that by decision to judge. But not to eat that request, so um I supported this idea. I think as well from the public safety committee, also supported by uh city west or post. Seeing this happen.
All right.
I move to request that the Oak Ridge Municipal Court begin publishing the court docket on the city website. At least one week in advance of each court date.
Wait a second. Second.
So do you anticipate that, that this would, um. Like be a document that's loaded and then it would be stored so there'd be multiple, you know, they would. Continue to be. Um, accessible or would one page go up this week and then it gets replaced?
It would be done either way, that's kind of like an agenda. For some meetings, so it could, it could be done either way. It asked that when you can read the O one or just, just keep posting on the website so that it have date.
Oh, I, I would be all for, um. Keeping, keeping them all on there. And so.
Yeah, I've been, I'm, I'm kind of thinking, maybe because of the record, we would have to. I mean, we'd always keep a file because it would be written, maybe on computers.
Mm-hmm.
Probably. Best practice would probably be to just keep it on one line.
Mm-hmm.
I know we wouldn't have to do a record request, some ask for the docket for.
Right, right.
Any other questions?
I see the fiscal impact is none, however, this is a workload increase to the meaning part.
I think we discussed that between, uh, there could be a little bit, uh. Maybe a couple extra minutes to upload the things.
This is a very quick thing.
Yeah, because she already comes up with the docket, up for the judge, um, but the practice right now is to do it like the night before.
It's not labor intensive though.
No, it's same issue already doing, the only added thing would be loading to the website.
You have any questions? All right, uh. Motion was to request that the Oak Ridge Municipal Board begin to post the board docket on the city website, it's one minute in advance to be each court date. Jackie?
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
I'm it.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Tarmen.
Hi.
Counselor Hollit.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. And then point six, rise council rules of procedure with public comment.
Okay, all rise, council, well aware, we've been working on the rising council rules of procedure. Uh, during August third meeting, council wanted to update the suggested edits from our city of thirty. Regarding the rules covering appointments, needs, um, added those edits, and ready council with a. New copy of the revised rules. Uh, frustrations, dislocation, everything, we're adding, but did my best and. Yeah, I. Believe it has everything council wanted. After the school.
First time we move into the public comments so we can get this before we move into the official version, so. There anybody on the Zoom platform wanting to comment on the council rules of procedure revision? Anybody in the room? Anybody in the room?
I move we approve the changes to the Oak Ridge City Council Rules of Procedure. Agreed upon during the July thirteenth city council work session and the August third city council meeting. And adopt the new twenty twenty three. Version of the rules to replace the old twenty twenty rules. And attachment A of ordinance nine thirty.
Wait, your second.
Second.
Any discussions or questions? On the Zoom. I do have one, um I'm opposed to this provision, uh for two reasons. Um it doesn't go to support any person attendance by counselors or meetings, I think is. A uh disservice to the citizens of Oak Ridge, I think they should have had to come and give me an eye. And talk to you if they needed it, so I don't know, I tried to get that inserted and it's uh not accepted by the council. And the second one is, I believe the committee of women's language is included there against the spirit and intent of the charter. The, and it's why I'm opposed to that. Any other questions, so we go, we'll vote. The motion was to approve the changes to the city, open city council rules of procedure agreed upon during the July thirteen city council work session. And the officer city council meeting, and adopt the new twenty twenty three version of the rules. Replace the old twenty twenty rules and attach to the day of the present time.
Counselor Brewer.
I.
Mayor Ketchum.
No.
Counselor Charman.
Name.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Bjarnson. Counselor Hullett.
I.
Alright, motion carries uh ten point seven administrative warrants for abatement legal resources, senator authorization request.
Alright, so. These type of issues come up time and time again uh in council meetings versus staff, in terms of. Abatement issues and some of our citizens that. Continuously ignore uh citations they receive or. Jump there, there are digress, whatever it may be. Um currently, our ordinances. Don't permit the city to. Do the, to enter onto private property, do the abatement work and then charge. The ordinance for that. Be directly or through a lien. Um. So they. The law has been changing a lot, this recently, and it's kind of required. Uh legal research, our city attorney panels from uh police can do that, and it's estimated. That it costs around three thousand dollars in in. Legal fees for that work, since our annual budget for. Legal fees is only fifteen thousand dollars, three thousand is twenty percent. Um. I just wanted to give, this is. Permission before I authorize that, personally, I I think it would be worth it. And we haven't set a ton on legal fees issue on it. I think, I think we'll still be able to stand a budget here, but.
Okay, do I hear no motion?
I move to approve the expenditure for legal research by the city attorney. Into the issue of administrative warrants and abatement ordinances.
Alright, motion made by counsel, any questions of change or that?
Um, I didn't get a chance to go to these websites that you listed, but thank you for doing that. I wondered if. You know off the top of your head, are those codes that are? Uh doing basically exactly what we're wanting our codes to be changed to? And if so. Wouldn't it make sense like we've done in other times to maybe just kind of copy and paste and? And then have the city.
Normally, yes, but in this case I would say no, and that's because the the law has changed considerably on these sort of issues. Where cities, cities are just able to just kind of come on your private property anytime they wanted to. Now that's been on that a little bit. That's why the administrative warrant part is important, because. Right now, a judge can't issue administrative warrant for an officer or city official to go on some. That's now required, this is science. That's actually so, uh and I don't think that that is in their, these regulations, initial codes. They probably kind of, they must have ended it by now or. But there's just a lot of. Changes, especially from the major circuit, in regards to um. Houseless boats and, you know, RVs they live in now considered homes. Even though it looks, seem like a home to some of us, they are, it's their home, sitting with a tent. So I just would, I want to be really careful in getting legal research on this.
Counselor.
Um, one of the questions I have is because um the warrants would would allow us to go on to clean up the messes that other people are making. Which I think is great, you know how I feel about that, but my question is, who's gonna pay for that? Because as of right now, I have neighbors, for instance, that have been issued tens of thousands of dollars in fines. And they go before the judge, and the judge is like, oh, we don't have any money, they're away. So we have that going on, so are we gonna start sending these these um fees and citations to collections? So that the city actually gets that money back, or is this, are we doing research for something that's just gonna end up costing the city more money? With no money coming back, running the citations themselves?
Yeah, so what if fixing ordinances would allow us? To yes, directly charge the homeowner, if they don't pay, then we would be allowed to put a lien on property. So we don't have to get the money back right away, but when the house is sold, then we put it. Part of this will also al- allow us, city. We can then have a house and then, you know, we have to pay. What the house. Their value. It just, it just gives us a lot more options, but. You know, you should, you're you're addressing um. Even with the collections agency, some of these people unfortunately are untouchable, because you can't. By by law, you can't take anyone's social security.
Yeah.
Really nice, so that's what they live on. But if they own the home.
Yeah.
We need some.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Um would we be charging our cost? You know, like labor cost or whatever it is to go and do the work? And then is it possible for any of those? Fees to get reduced?
Probably, because by the time the city is doing the work, they will already had. What is the process, rewritten warnings?
Okay.
Blah blah blah, that is kind of a. The city doesn't have time to do this stuff, but if. Tried everything else, warnings, letters. And and not do anything, eventually, the city will be able to, we'll put this up, cut up the grass ourselves, and yes, that's what we're charging is. The loaded wage of the boys.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that would be able to go to court and get against.
I mean, I guess they could fight it, they could fight the league, so they. They may say, well, we we need too much, you overcharged us. Robert Christmas will actually. Earn you two dollars or not, thirty five or something like that, or if he lied about the number of hours to show, whatever, yes, that could be fine for it.
Okay.
Yeah, that supports it, supports it. As isn't, um, I hope we're not in office, we need to debate even before and. Not have time here.
We're sort of excited, people, or.
We've never known on their, got their reasons on it.
Not as to my knowledge.
I don't think you previously stated, it's just you have. I've heard of a story to people who don't know, they never really go on, they never showed up and they just ate it up.
Yeah.
Um, so, yes, there you do none of the nonsense.
And the research also includes flag and play language and the ready to go for an ordinance from city attorney.
Yes.
Any other questions? Alright, uh motion was to approve the expenditure for legal research by the city attorney to issue of administrative warrants and abatement. Ordinances. Jackie, you call for a vote please.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Bjarnson.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Hullett.
I.
Mayor Ketchum.
I.
Counselor Brewer.
I.
Counselor Charman.
I.
Right, motion carries. Um, item ten point eight, you want to reduce this council opinion?
Oh, thank you, yes, in our charter, we are. Um. The council, it says, in order. To do an annual review. On our appointees, the council has to vote on it, so I thought I'd make a motion. To do an annual review of our three council appointees. By the end of this calendar year, so December.
And then three point eight are.
Our city administrator, our judge and our reporter.
So James, do you write or uh write or write on state report?
I do, um.
Oh, do we have a second before we go into discussion?
Um.
The motion was to do an annual review of all three council appointees. By the end of this calendar year.
Okay, uh your second on that. A motion made by counsel, second by counsel, Hullett. So James, another review, you do an evaluation.
Yeah, so I do, I do an evaluation and uh. So in in regards to the reporter, uh she is a union resident employee. The union is against uh council doing an evaluation. However, it is allowed under our city charter. Uh so council, in my opinion, councils welcome to do the annual review. I cannot use that annual review as any part of my review per as. In point, and of course, also be limited to doing annual review based on just the reporter position.
Exactly.
Um. Especially to make sure the council knows that at a time that. Um. Welcome to to do that, um I will not take part in in your review, because I'm not part of council, um. And I will, and will not use it in any way as part of. My review proposition as whole, and of course, it will. Being part of her. HR file. Or won't be part of her official ones, in that's all. Governor, I are the union, uh, like department.
So given that. Did I hear that right, so any reviews done by council will be part of HR file? It's.
Correct.
Or just yours would be part of the HR file?
Mine would, because I'm not a union employee, there's no CDA.
Yeah.
Venting that. Yeah, they did the unions, they made it very clear to me that. Anything is included. If we try to put something in our HR files, it's definitely to breathe that.
What's the point of it then?
That would be my question.
It's in our charter, it's not all stuff just besides.
Except for a vote, except for a vote, obviously, talking.
It's in our charter.
I don't think. I don't think it's mandated, because.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said charter and I meant council rules. I read it, I read it when we. Is it, I just remember reading it when we, um when I reviewed this again today. For tonight, it's in. It's in council rules, which a lot of what comes from council rules is from the charter, yeah. Well, then I'll find it, let's see here.
I just, I see the fact that it doesn't honor. Records, which means change, will not use it to impact any performance of your own his part or any pay scales or anything else. Uh, I don't. And then we try to maintain a good relationship with our unions, I don't know that there's a lot of value in going through that effort. She'll get a thorough evaluation from the city administrator to look for data. Council can ask. Issues with the city recorder to the city administrator, and he can use that to back to. Uh council.
Well, then, wouldn't we be able to have him? Consider an evaluation as an issue?
A written evaluation, game, with a camera on record. You can provide feedback and then develop a CD, feedback, developing this evaluation, if it doesn't have to set it.
I'm, I can, I I will read it, but I'm certainly, I cannot. Get it presented to her evaluation or overall job, because the reporter part, small fraction anyway, can't say. This is your, having done well, see, see uh the council's. Yeah.
It is the council's job to review and appoint that position, it's not James's job, it's the council's job to appoint that position. And I could bring up things that I think, you know, I would want to put in, in a review about the city recorder position. Things that have been unprofessional that have happened right here in a couple of weeks, those are things that I think should be documented in a review like that. It's not about the person's rest of their job, which that's, that's not James, I'm talking about. The part that the council appoints, that's our job to appoint, we could reappoint somewhere else if that were to come up. But that is the council's job to appoint that position. It would be a part of public records for over those council. I don't know what the speaker is on.
I didn't really have a turn to cancel or appoint a position. So I guess the only thing you can really do is hand to the city reporter.
If there's a position, for instance, city recorder recorder position that city council appoints. Does that mean that the council has the power to unappoint and appoint someone else? Because couldn't that be part of the process, they could be brought to vote to maybe bring someone else in and.
That I predicted really easy, but she's an employee and, and.
Yeah.
The one that said, yes, send a liar or fire. All we can do is say, no longer the reporter, and then the reporter somehow.
And um. Chapter seven appointments in the um. Council rules under number one, appointments of city staff. Item B says reviews, any person appointed by the mayor. Or the city council shall be subject to an annual review by the council. Provided that the council votes to conduct such a review. And it says shall be subject to an annual. And that's why I made a motion to do a vote. And that's why I made a motion to do a vote.
I, it sounds like a conflict with the union. What we have versus what.
We're not evaluating. The job description that the union is covering, we're evaluating the city recorder duties only.
That just. I just, I just, I just with union and they are. Clear to. If, you know, can't be on a public, can't be part of her HR file. Can't be used. Or or considered in her. Evaluation, I mean.
So in her specific union duties, not on HR or not on the report duties? That's, that's a part of our time separating this. Is this? The union stop? And then there's recorder duties?
No, it's.
And then those are separate? From.
We have to find this, yeah, we don't appoint the council. And where. Yeah. I, some reason I'm not understanding the question, I cannot hire or, I cannot hire her, donor, or promote her based on council's review. Can have no impact on her point review, not included in her HR file, and it cannot.
It's strictly for the councils if they want to continue appointing her as the city reporter. And on that, strictly what it's used for.
Yes, I don't understand how it would be used, are we gonna, so in executive session, we would go through and. Tell each other the review that we gave or.
Yeah, the city recorder similarly, and then decide from there whether she will continue to be the city recorder or if we're gonna appoint someone else.
But I guess my point is. Like if she's gonna review her, it might.
Well, it's not gonna work. You have to establish processes just like.
That, that's my point is like, we're going to view individually or. Yeah. They pass it around.
I mean, because that's what I don't.
Yeah, the same as the reviews we've done for city administrators, you just have your own review process that each council is to do, and you do the same thing for the judge.
I don't think he's participated in one, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much the chat. Uh. It's, you do the review. If, if I understand the process correct, last year you did your review, asking if I wanted to hear your input, I did. Um. You could do the same with the judge, just do the word, they don't have to participate in here, you guys. Right, this is a, that's. Yeah, let's, you know, let's think about it, that's, they don't participate in the evaluation process, really, all we've done is. Organizing extensive process. Tell ourselves when we, when our, if any of our.
I disagree, when we have a city reporter mocking and mocking in a public session at our votes, I think that needs to be addressed. I personally have had any, you, you members come to me and ask, why would you allow you guys to be disrespectful like that? Mocked and laughed at, I think that's something that we should.
That's a violation of the rest.
I feel like it was said at least two or three times, like it's an evaluation.
It's a violation that is only.
But it can go back to city council and have someone else load it in versus the report. Because there's obviously an issue that's happening within the council with the city reporter. And so it just says, it's the first step of. You know, two or three steps that city council will have to go through that. They may find just a series of that of the city council, um, being. Step one, to each other and professional.
Alright. Uh, we have motion in a second, and the motion was, during this session. Motion was to conduct an annual review of appointed officials. At the end of the calendar year, that I make. And. Yeah, you would call her real quick.
Yes. Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hey.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Alright, motion passes on to. I have eleven visits from the city administrator. From the one one, sorry, please change. Alright, um. Ours are. Basically, pretty under control, I know, would, um, would have information, um. Counsel, let's go into, into the mayor, I went. All awake, just somewhat, um. Getting destruction there, and it sounds like they're not even sure they're real, they can't, and answer this, so they're interested in all this, um. Anyway, yes, included in your information and things are going well. Any questions, subfathers? Okay, uh, one point two. Land county honestly, your residence fire rights, right, applications open. And that's just trying to bring the people's attention that folks that live outside uh city limits. And now apply from now until the end of this month. For their, the counties fire wise grant, grant incentive program. Uh, so again, it's eligible for people that live outside the city, but if you live in the city, now. It's now funding, so. I reply quickly because I think it's kind of a person versus a thing.
I would just point out that what I read was outside the urban growth boundary. So not just outside city limits, but they have to live outside the UBG or whatever that's called. UGB.
One point three, counsel Kenyon.
Okay, so that was where I just requested uh for an update from the city administrator on implementing the collection agency.
Yeah, alright, so, um, thank you for bringing this up. Mentioned it. Um, okay, so I determined that as long as you hire one of the agencies that does not charge this fee, they just take a percentage, you don't need to do the whole hard process. That being said, there are a number of companies that do that. So that being said, I, I have the power to just choose one tomorrow. Uh, but I'd like council's input, if, would you? Purse that I find three suitable candidates and have them presented to council? So the council can make that decision, as to which burn to hire, or would you just rather have me?
I'm okay with just you picking one, as long as you, uh, like you've told me before. You can add on the cost of. What they're gonna charge us for doing it, and so then, as long as the city is of no obligation to pay. I'm okay.
You opposed that? Would you like to change? James, you have to receive the business updates.
I don't think I can do that.
Okay. Uh, item twelve, allowing to remove the senate, they're run thirteen orders or resolutions, they're run. Public hearings, they're on fifteen staff or community mission reports. Fifteen point one, parks and community services committee.
Uh. Yeah, okay. So, um, in the first standing meeting, some of the hands who discussed what is the status of sponsorship. We're here on a firm, but a banner bank. Uh, we were dating the status of the chaos, we were putting in an effort. Uh, we discussed R P waivers, possibly a B B fat charging at Ann Arbor, laying back priorities. If the new business, we discussed contract people who are studying.
Questions on that? Okay, one point two, but with safety committee, council, Cochrane, she's still there, she's there, but uh, she had to just be. Okay, great, great, great. Um, alright, so, uh, as briefly mentioned, everybody unanimously to recommend the council having the union's or article posted. We also continue to work on structuring the community service program for the union board. And then at discussions of recent hot topics such as the fire, the heat wave. And the water system uh issue. It's a census was city. Handle those pretty well, so. I agree. Uh, fifteen point three, audit committee.
Audit committee uh decided not to meet again until after the audits in process, so we didn't have a meeting. This month.
On to charter review subcommittee, council.
And that is ongoing, uh, we did meet and. Uh, the only thing I think that's different than the ongoing work that we're doing is that we decided to implement um. Bi-monthly. Is that how you would say it, twice a month, maybe, moving forward, because we really want to try and get this um. On the ballot for the twenty twenty four.
Uh, fifty point five, what next, please? Right, uh, what next, and uh. We've had a presentation from Aurora Instrom from Disney's Oregon, as a new organization. Uh, explained, uh, what kind of services they provide. We also discussed the legal in cities, two thousand point three legislative session summary updates. Council has hobbies up as well. And I have one for you too, Kelly, you're. Um, also discuss the new TV new drop, or you. Um, discuss and uh. A, that issue next month, as things develop. Also discuss the ELC. ELDC, um, development study, we're working on. But. Fifteen point six, special fire district subcommittee, council hall.
Uh, we completed feasibility study report, did you have a?
Yeah.
If anybody would like probably to, hearing you on, um, we did, our city able went and to the attended the. He was a little fire district meeting and gave a report to their board specifically, um, but those. Reports were completed, if anybody in the council that wants one and somehow kind of deciphering it, talk to Steve, I'm happy to help. Um, and then our next step is we're gonna have some chiefs come in from other agencies that have done different houses. To talk to us about what's worked and what not worked and ideas of us, so.
Can I get? Look, I.
And you.
I would assume.
If you have a, or is it a hard?
He gave him a, he gave him a hard copy, I'm sure he could give you an electronic.
Right, fifteen point seven, admin committee.
And I, it would, I don't think we.
We, no, we worked on, on now, getting all the committees.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we started on the process of reviewing the, um, thank you, James. All of the resolutions for all of the committees. And it's funny, I thought there was only one or two things that are kind of not the same on all of them, but we, we found quite a few things that are not the same on all of them, so. Um, we're trying to tackle getting those. Stayed down.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, WAC, so, do you have anything else?
You guys heard the whole bit, we worked on the uh solar feasibility studies and the. Uh, community survey that was put out by consort, and it is in July, and they're supposed to have results in October. They should have raw data for the council and then a summary to put out to the public. Just as a reminder, that's one of the tools that the WAC committee is using for new tenants and renovations.
Uh, fifteen point nine, the WAC funding committee, they have the, you know, just to report. Um. Let's see, executive session, so James is gonna go beyond. Um. But the council is willing to name first, I think it's fifteen, or whatever that one. We do have three executive session, anyone that has it's important, okay? Alright, this, uh, James, could you give me the final session, is there gonna be a motion, anything to put into this? It's almost like the, yes, plus there's almost a public comment. Okay. So for the folks in the audience, unfortunately, it's gonna be a recess uh for uh ten minutes. Ten minutes. We're going to do executive session under Aurora, one nine two point six six zero. Two echo E, to conduct with the reasons persons dead day about everybody to negotiate real URB transactions. Are we gonna, go back here or?
Stop.
I think so, we got a plan, alright.